Good evening. We have seven o'clock and I'd like to call this meeting of your Westland City Council order. We will begin tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Wishart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Clerk. Ball call, please.
Councilwoman Baumann.
Here.
Councilwoman Hart.
Here.
Councilwoman Hornbuckle.
Here.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Present.
Pro Tem Sampi.
Present.
Councilwoman Wishart.
Here.
Council President McDermott.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. We will now begin tonight's meeting with special announcements and presentations. We have two of them tonight. Coming up first is Miriam Katie to talk about the Westland Wayne County Relay.
Good evening, everyone. City Council President, Pro Tem, all of you wonderful people up here that I'm always so thankful to allow me to speak about Relay for Life. It's a passion of a lot of us and I just appreciate you so much. We're so thankful that our city, administration, fire police, I mean, the whole community just stands behind us and there's not very many relays that can say that. So we are very blessed and I'm so thankful. So just want to do a reminder here. June 8th is our Relay for Life. It's the main event. 11:00 AM is our kickoff of the event, starts our, you know, celebration. And it's really great. We have a few speakers, survivor speaker also, and then our survivor caregivers kickoff the event with the first lap. And so they end up at the farmer's market. We treat them to a nice lunch, a goody bag, and then it kicks off the whole event of like a lot of different things, entertainment. Our first responder lap will also be at 1:00 is what we're thinking. I will send out a schedule to everyone. We would, we like to celebrate our first responders and there's so many different laps that you can look forward to with the entertainment and of course our luminaria later in the evening. So we're 11:00 AM to midnight. So please come out. There's still time to join in in any way, especially a survivor. If you're a survivor or know of a survivor and you would like them to join up, you could do it on our website or you could also get ahold of me, but it's, it's www.relayforlife.org/westlandwayneamI. And that gives you a lot of information. My name is Miriam Katie and my cellphone is 734-718-0476. So please call us if you have any questions. And like I said, we're just so thankful to be able to have another year of relay. Of course, I would like to be standing up here saying, guess what? No more cancer. So that's what we're trying to fight for and do that walk for everybody. Doesn't matter who you are, what you're going through. And the day that you get diagnosed, I don't think a lot of people realize that. The day that you get diagnosed, you are a survivor. A lot of people don't feel that they are, but they are. And so we just want to, you know, and then it's in memory of two at our luminaria, so luminaria bags. I mean, there's so much going on. And we're going to be at the Westland Farmer's Market too, having a table there of awareness, the 23rd and the 30th. So we're really thankful. So if there's any questions, please reach out to me. But once again, I thank you very much. Have a great night. Stay healthy.
Thank you so much as always, Miriam. We will now have a special presentation from Sergeant Dave Polite and the Westland Fire Department.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for having us tonight. We just completed our 2024 Westland Firefighters Charity Fund. Last one coming right there. Good evening. Is that better? There we go. So we, as the firefighters, we do a charity event every year. And in that event, our main drive of that is to actually raise funds to send people to school for our profession, right? We send people to paramedic college, also to firefighting academy. With that being said, we've started our charity in 2004 officially. We incorporated in 2004, but we were doing work well in the community well before that. So since May 16th, 1966, and if you go back a little bit further to the Nankin Township days, we've always been involved in getting people into the profession through scholarships. So our last ball we just completed in 2024 here on Saturday, which Council, thank you very much for coming, and all the other dignitaries that were there. We surpassed our goals this year and we're really proud of that. And since we incorporated, we've given over $364,000 to charities alone with all the scholarships. That's just a scholarship. So thank you for everybody for donating to that. And that's a real number. So when we do our benevolent work, it's not just the charities for the scholarships. There's a ton of other things that I mentioned that night that we do and we're proud to do. But this one is very near and dear to us because it involves and is named after the, the two firefighters specifically that we lost in the line of duty that their names are on the plaque right outside in the lobby here, firefighter Brian Mulkey and Sergeant Todd Stanaway. So, you know, when we do, when we did the ball, we tried to go all, all out with it. We tried to go to the nines, everybody dresses up, and we have a good time. But the real, the real thing that gets to us is that when you all support us, I know we, we may have the uniform, we may have, you know, the fancy big trucks and all that, but it's you guys who are really doing the work and we're that, that front man for that or front woman for that. So that's a big thank you from every one of our firefighters. So we, we really appreciate the candidates that applied. They, it was very competitive. So to those of you that have received, are receiving these awards, just know you guys stand out and we appreciate what you stand for and what you wrote in your, your essays there. So without further ado, I'd like to bring up the, are all the candidates here right? So the people that have received this award, which is a scholarship, it goes towards a funding of their choice of education. The three Bobby Faust Awards go towards their choice of education. And then we have a specific Todd Stanaway and firefighter Brian Mulkey Award, which go towards those who want to enter the service that one day will leave to them. So currently with the Westland Fire Department, we have three of those people that received that scholarship working for their city, for the city of Westland, and they have extreme pride in what they do. So that again, I have to reiterate, couldn't have been done without all of everybody here's support. So we thank the community. We thank them for letting us be a part of this right now and taking the time and city council meeting. So I'd like to call up these few people here. And now, I'm usually good with names, but one of them got me. So, so for the Bobby Faust Scholarship, and if, actually, if I could have the fire chief please come down as well as Council President. Actually, you know what? This is a little step for, could we have all of Council come down? Because everybody here was supportive and it is our contributions together. We put aside politics, believe it or not, and we, we all support these people. So the first one would be Addison Chin. That's Addison Chin, present. Fantastic. And then I'll come in in just a second there. We'll all get in there.
Squeeze in a little tighter, please.
Congratulations, Addison. All right. You can sit down and then we'll do a couple of pictures and then, thank you very much, Addison. Her essay was fantastic. Appreciate it. Ariana, is it Gyllenhaal's? Or is it Gyllenwater's? Help me out on that one. Kaylee Shepherd. Three for three. All right. Doing all right. See if we can keep it going. Aidan Parker. Aidan Parker, all right. And on three, one, two, three. All right. I think I'm going to go five for five here. TS Springfield. Again, thank you guys very much for letting us take a little bit of the time tonight. Just know that next year, our charity ball will be on May 3rd, 2025. We already booked it. So at the Atlantic Center. Thank you, Council. Thank you, everybody for supporting us and everybody have a good night.
Wonderful. Well, thank, oh, yes. And for those families that came, step outside of the council chambers here and they are going to be doing photographs with each of the wonderful students and their families.
You can stay here, but it gets pretty dull. I wouldn't recommend.
That's right. That's right. Okay. We will now move on to questions or input on the business agenda from the public. This section will allow members of the public at the beginning of the meeting to address the council regarding items that are on tonight's business agenda. Questions may be asked, responded to during the agenda item following a motion and support from your city council. Is there anyone on my left side? Is there anyone on my right side? Is there anyone else in the audience? Comments on tonight's business agenda? Okay. Seeing and hearing none, we will close comments on the agenda and move to the consent calendar. Is there a motion?
Support.
There's a motion by Councilman Hart. There is a support by Councilwoman Rakowski. Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Any changes to the consent calendar? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Approval of minutes of regular meeting held May 6th, 2024. Request from Charlie Wasiah CW Fireworks to operate a seasonal temporary fireworks tent in the parking lot of 2561 South Wayne Road from July 1st, 2024 through July 4th, 2024 hours of operation, 9:00 AM until 9:00 PM daily. Approval of bid for sidewalk trip hazard removal services. Administration recommends precision concrete cutting for a period of three years, amount not to exceed $250,000 and if approved, authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign a contract approved by the city attorney and executed by the vendor. Approval of bid for concrete pavement rehabilitation. Administration recommends bid extension with GV Cement Contracting Company for a period of three years on an as needed basis and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign a contract approved by the city attorney and executed by the vendor. Approval of bid for the hydro excavation exterior inspection services. Administration recommends underground infrastructure services, doing business as dukes for a period of one year, amount per rate schedule and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign a contract approved by the city attorney and executed by the vendor. Approval of, excuse me, approval of bid for the purchase of ventilation fans for the fire department. Administration recommends McQueen, amount not to exceed $28,920.55 and if approved, authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign a contract approved by the city attorney and executed by the vendor. Approval of bid for the purchase of thermal imaging cameras for the fire department. Administration recommends WS Darley, amount authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign a contract approved by the city attorney and executed by the vendor. Approval of bid for the purchase of rechargeable flashlights for the fire department. Administration recommends municipal emergency services, amount not to exceed $8,255.28 and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign a contract approved by the city attorney and executed by the vendor. Approval of bid for the purchase of chainsaws for the fire department. Administration recommends McQueen, amount not to exceed $11,524.32 and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign a contract approved by the city attorney and executed by the vendor. Approval of bid for the purchase of cut-off saws for the fire department. Administration recommends municipal emergency services, amount not to exceed $8,267.87 and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign a contract approved by the city attorney and executed by the vendor. Approval of bid for the purchase of firefighting nozzles for the fire department. Administration recommends CSI Emergency Apparatus LLC, amount not to exceed $8,688, authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign a contract approved by the city attorney and executed by the vendor. Excuse me. Approval of bid for the purchase of fire hose adapters and gate valves for the fire department. Administration recommends municipal emergency services, amount not to exceed $10,999.6 and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign a contract approved by the city attorney and executed by the vendor. Approval of professional engineering services agreement with Hennessy Engineers, Inc. to provide outside professional engineering services for ongoing reviews associated with the building, law, planning and DPS departments. Agreement is for a period of three years on an as needed basis per rate schedule. Moving to payment of voucher.
Is there a motion?
There's a motion.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Hornbuckle. Is there any discussion from the maker?
No.
Discussion from the supporter? Any additional discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries.
New business item number one, approval of proposed land division and combination 5967 North Dowling, west side of Dowling, south of Stacy, Mary Beecher, planning division number 2267. Administration recommends approval with contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations and if approved directs the city attorney to draft the necessary land division resolution.
Is a motion by Councilman Hornbuckle, supported by Pro Tem Sampi? Mo?
Thanks, Council President. Good evening, City Council. The subject property here is Zoned R5. That's our single-family residential district. It's in a single-family subdivision developed by a single-family dwelling. The city asked the property owner that's here today at 5967 North Dowling to file a request for a land division in combination in order to properly amend the city's plat to be consistent with a Wayne County Court's decision pertaining to a private civil matter that is between the petitioner and the neighboring property to the south over here over some issues and concerns arising from the driveway at the neighbor's property. There's a brief description of the private civil lawsuit in your backup. Again, the petitioner is here to answer questions if you have them. The private civil lawsuit does not pertain to the city at all. The proposed parcel A will have, well, the proposed parcel A will have 49 feet of frontage along North Dowling and the proposed parcel B will have 51.2 feet of frontage along North Dowling. So the neighboring property is essentially receiving 1.2 feet of Mary's property. And the administration and planning department are recommending approval of this. Happy to answer any questions that you have. The surveys are in your backup as well, but for the people at home, I'll kind of breeze through this real quick. Again, 50 feet here, 49 feet here, and essentially this area here where my red cursor is, is what is being taken away from Mary and being given to the property at the south. And you can kind of see that jogging out here a little bit, 1.2 feet out. Again, happy to answer any questions. You can see the driveway over here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mo. Would the petitioner like to come forward?
Hi, I'm Mary Beecher. And do you want me just to tell you what happened?
Yeah, if you'd like to give us a synopsis, then we're going to open it up for questions from the council.
Okay. I bought the house in February of 2022. And when I bought the house, the seller said and has signed under oath that there were no encroachments. And also the, it turned out that there's two very aggressive pit bulls next door that I'm terrified of, really. They're scary. In fact, they got out just before I was at the planning commission meeting and chased me and my dog into our backyard. But, so I contracted with Upright Fence in Westland to put in a six-foot privacy fence so that the dogs couldn't see us. And he said, get a land boundary survey that could be used in court. So I went to Gregory Ash in Plymouth and he did a land boundary survey and he said, I think you have a little problem that parts of the asphalt from the front post going forward, it's not a straight line driveway. It's sort of wiggly and it encroached on my property. So I hired an attorney, Aldrich Legal Services. I went down to Wayne County Circuit Court. We looked for any kind of documentation for permission to put, for them to put in the asphalt driveway. I've been down the city clerk's office numerous times asking and there's, nobody has anything. We went on Google. We just couldn't find anything to take with us into court. The people went in and said, oh, it's been there forever. But the problem is they haven't been paying taxes on it. The occupant of my house has and since February 2022, I've been paying taxes on it. So they're claiming ownership of the land, but they're not, you know, coming forward to pay the taxes on the property that they're claiming they own. And there's nothing I can do. Now I just have to follow the court order. So I'm here for tax relief from the city of Westland for the property that's being taken away from me. And I just have to follow the court order. I have to do what a judge says. I'm, you know, this is where I am with this. I'm just praying the dogs don't get me. I'm more concerned about the dogs and my safety than I am about the property line. But I am straightening out the property line in case I ever have to sell the house.
Okay. Is there any question from the maker?
I don't like to allow the maker.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, the maker. No.
I don't really have any questions. It looks like we outlined everything this evening, but I'll be in support of this. It sounds like obviously that there's some difficulties and I wish you best of luck.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. I appreciate all your time.
Absolutely.
Now we're going to go, Council.
Good evening.
Hi.
I have a
I have the sense that some of my colleagues, and it's no fun going through these, you know, binary issues. I know you're executing the court order. I hope it does provide you relief. I hope you're able to get the fence back. You need to feel safe in your home.
Yeah, well, the fence is in. Upright Fence did a great job. And I'm just, I put in trees so that their lights can't come over and so it's awful to them, their dogs, and I'm doing everything I can just to be in my own little space.
Like paradise, right?
Yeah.
Absolutely. Well, hopefully you'll get the tax relief as well, and there's no further issues down the road for you. You have a survey now, so that's good.
Yeah, so, yes, thank you.
I'll be in support.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman.
Yeah, Council President, I just would ask our council, you know, now I'm number four. I think the residents have been through quite enough, so if it's okay for anybody, we just kind of extend the vote and let our end this ordeal. At least we can do, at least we can speak without our part.
All set? Okay. All right. So there's a motion on the floor. It has support. Is there any dissent? Any dissent? Okay. Hearing and seeing, no dissent. Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. You're all set.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
And ma'am, if you do want to stay after to talk about the dogs, I'd be happy to talk with you about that.
Oh, I would like to talk to you about the pit bulls.
Yes.
Very much.
We'll do that.
Okay, absolutely.
New business item number two. Approval of proposed rezoning from PUD Planned Unit Development to CB1 Low-Intensity Commercial Business District, 1155 North Wayne Road, northwest corner of Wayne and Marquette. Mark Cohen, Planning Division, number 1707J. Administration recommends approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations, and if approved directs the city attorney to draft the necessary ordinance amendment.
And we're getting through this, so we now have sound on council members' microphones, and we also have visual aids here. So just to recap, for those of you who were watching from the audience and watching at home, new business item one, we realize you may not have heard what actually happened on that new business item. It did pass, so new business item one on tonight's agenda was adopted and passed. We are now on to new business item two. It has a motion and support. Mo?
Okay, thanks, Council President. The subject property here, it's outlined in yellow. It's a big piece of property, approximately 17 acres. It is split-zoned. That red line is the dividing line. On your right-hand side is the CB1 District. That's our low-intensity commercial business district. And on your left-hand side is PUD Planned Unit Development Designation. There is a single-family dwelling that is unoccupied that sits on the property. You can see it from Wayne Road. It's over here where my cursor is. The petitioner, he's here in the audience, the project architect, is proposing to rezone the PUD portion of this property to CB1 to match the front side of this towards Wayne Road in order to facilitate the development of a skilled nursing home that will also provide rehabilitation and physical therapy services for both inpatient and outpatient patients. Adjacent land uses and zoning, let's see if I have my zone. To the north, we have R5 Single Family Residential. And to the south, we also have R5 Single Family Residential vacant. To the east, across the street, on the opposite side of Wayne, we have a CB1 Commercial Business District. And to the west, we also have a PUD and developed by the Abbeys of Westland. There is also an SPD, that's our former PUD Special Plan Development District, that is developed by the Marquette House that is an assisted living community, a little bit different than what's proposed here. The future land use map designation for this property is residential, single-family residential. The zoning ordinance requires the planning commission to make certain findings when considering a request to rezone. The three that I'd like to read here on the record, first, the suitability of the property in question for use is permitted under the existing zoning, which is PUD. The PUD designation was adopted for a previously approved mixed-use development as part of the original Westland Regional Senior Campus, approved on October 4th of 1990. The subject property has been vacant for many years after that and is not likely to be developed consistent with that PUD. That PUD, just for your knowledge, proposed 11 residential buildings and one Alzheimer's Center, one wellness center, and one shopping center. Next, the zoning ordinance requires us to look at the trend of development, if any, in the general area of the property in question, including any rezonings that have taken place. There have been no recent major developments or rezonings in the immediate area. Recently, the city demolished the Grindstone Restaurant Building that you know of became blighted after a fire and sat vacant for several years. It's important to note for you that the city has received various development inquiries about this property, mostly self-storage, recreational vehicle storage as well, but also many warehousing as well. Next, and the final one that I want to read on the record, is the objective of the Westland Master Plan and whether that is met via this rezoning or not. We know that the master plan indicates residential for this site. The proposed rezoning is to accommodate a skilled nursing facility, so the planning department and the planning commission feels that this is consistent with that objective. Nursing homes, specifically the operations of this one, provide, will provide high level of medical care for seniors who need it 24/7, who need 24/7 support, and its environment will be more like homes with seniors having custom furnished units with personal items. The site plan, although not completely developed yet, will have a residential character as well, with a pitched roof, short building that will match the character of a residential building. The administration and planning commission are recommending approval. This is a conceptual plan. If the rezoning is approved, the developer will create a site plan that is way more detailed, ready for development, and bring it forward to you at a later meeting this year. That's all I have. The developer is in the audience today. It's also important to note, too, for you and for residents at home, that there were maybe about 15, no more than 20 people from the adjacent Abbeys community that came out just to hear the presentation related to this rezoning and what was occurring. No major objections or concerns, just wanted to listen in and see what was going on. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Would the petitioner like to come forward?
Good evening. Mark Cohen, President of North Coast Architects. While Mr. Ayub did a fine job of obviously presenting the pertinent information, I had a few other things that I wanted to share with members of council this evening. Progressive Quality Care, that's the parent company that is doing this project, while they develop the nursing homes, they also maintain and operate them. They are currently in the third generation of their family that are involved in nursing homes. In Ohio, they currently have 10 open and operational avenue projects with an 11th that is currently in plan review with the hopes of starting construction this, sometime this summer. In Michigan, we currently have two projects that are under construction, one in Holland and one in Holland Township. So the avenue at Westland would be our third project in Michigan with hopefully more to Why do we come here to Westland? Why do we see this as an opportunity that's both good, not just for my client, the owners and operators, but for the city of Westland? This is a good site based on its relationship to the existing building that's on Campus Drive on the other side, the Marquette House, which is an assisted living facility. We're a skilled nursing facility, and it's kind of a feeder into the facility here as members who live there, residents, through the circle of life or the continuum of care have the opportunity to still be able to stay in the community, which we always think is an important part for the residents so that they don't have to move out or go to other locations. And of course, through due diligence by the client, they look and look for counties that are in need of beds, and this fits into that, into that envelope for them. As was stated by Mr. Ayub, that this is a very, I mean, we know it's an institutional use, but we try to make it very residential in character, both in its appearance. It's a one-story building, and we use pitched roofs and residential materials and details. I know that's not really part of the rezoning request, but I think it's important that you know why we think that this will fit in and it makes sense to rezone it. Asphalt shingles, brick veneer, stone siding, overhangs and details and things that are all fit into a residential character. And inside the building, there are resident suites, 98 of them, all private resident suites, all with their own full, complete, accessible bathroom with roll-in showers and materials that are, that are higher-end, granite countertops. They all have mini refrigerators and flat-screen TVs, and the finishes throughout are all high-end, and you're welcome to go to Progressive Quality Care website, and you can surely see pictures and information on their products and what they, what they do. So I think that's kind of just a quick overview of some additional information and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions from the maker? Sorry. Yes, councilman.
Thank you for coming here. Thank you for choosing Westland as a new development site here. I do have a couple of questions. I'm not sure this is for you or Mo, but will they be owning the land where the house is as well? Is there any plans for development there?
So currently, there's nothing planned. Oh. I was going to say.
There's an additional piece that I want to mention. Thank you, councilman, for the question. The property consists of the entire yellow perimeter there on your screen, so they are purchasing that property. This is a very hard piece of property to develop. You can kind of see this mode area over here that is vacant property. There's a big regional pipeline down here, which, again, makes the property hard to develop. They are staying in this area over here, outside of this square along Wayne over here. I believe the house will be and probably should be developed, but I can't speak to that definitively. Thank you.
And for your target residents, what age group are you targeting?
Really, it's, it's any, any person that needs the skilled nursing, you know, type of care or some type of rehab and a shorter-term assignment. But residents are anywhere from in their 70s to their 90s. It just, there is, I mean, they don't shoot for a specific, they just try to provide the service for those residents who are in need of that type of care, but usually they fall into that older category.
And I'm just looking for, kind of, wrap my head around it. Are the individuals, are they going to be coming and going, or are they just, you know, living, just, you know, just not coming in and out the facility?
Yeah, most of them are residents that are there for the long term. There are some short rehab-type of residents slash patients that come there, but that isn't the driving objective, even though physical therapy is provided and available for, for patients both in and out. It's usually for, more geared for the elderly community.
I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, councilman.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening. Thank you for being here. It's always nice to see development in the city of Westland, but it does pique some concerns with me, and I know this is a zoning issue. However, since we're talking about the scope of business that you want to bring in or your client wants to bring in, we have a lot of these senior rehabilitative centers that have been demanding quite a bit of assistance from our fire department. And though, you know, our fire department is very aware of what their, their call to service is, it seems as though many of these businesses that come into town have not equipped themselves properly to take care of their residents when they fall. So many times they're called for lift assists and things like of that nature, which really does put a great deal of stress upon the department. So on the zoning side, I'm here to have, give you my support, but once we get to the business discussion, I'd certainly like to see us have a more aggressive ordinance in protecting the livelihoods of our fire department and the rest of our residents as they're being called away very often from emergencies to do some of these lift assists that really, the business that is providing the residential care should have the right equipment to handle. So that's my two cents. You know, I would like to see the land developed. I understand it's a difficult parcel, but in the future, as we move forward and we're, you know, taking care of this huge generation of people who are going to require your services, it also has to be a right fit for, you know, the men and women that serve our city and all of our residents so that no emergency is, you know, I know, we never ignore anything, but we certainly don't want to have them overstretched and overburdened when the proper equipment fails to be present in these businesses. So that's my, my two cents again.
Well, I obviously am not involved in the operational side of things. I can only go and state that the fact that they do have 14 facilities and throughout communities in the two states that I mentioned, they are aware of those types of situations, and I'm sure would be happy to discuss their plans and how they operate and take care of those things because we, we understand the burden that can be placed on, on the services that the fire and police departments provide in these situations, and I'm sure they'll be happy to discuss and work through those with you.
Certainly. I'm happy to hear that. Thank you.
Councilman Hart.
Thank you, Council President. I'm not going to let you off the hook that easy. My colleague, Councilwoman Rukowski, and I have, pretty much have the same attitude and opinion. I recognize that this is a zoning, you know, issue right here, but understanding what your intended purpose is for it, and I think I might be a little bit more gruff than my colleague, the fact that your client has 14 other businesses doesn't tell me that they're, they're operating in a good business mindset. To have one of these facilities as a for-profit institution, and a for-profit institution tells me that part of their cost of doing businesses provide appropriate care 24 hours a day, 365 days a week. We've seen a lot in this town, and I want you to carry this back to your client as they move this along, okay? That their cost of doing business is being shirked over to our fire department, and the taxpayers are picking up the bill that, quite frankly, these, these businesses should be shouldering. It's unfair to your customers, your clients' customers, and it's unfair to our residents. I do want to see this property developed, but we will be, I, I'll speak for myself, I'll be very critical upon their commitments made here in front of the day. I'll be very critical upon their commitments made here in front of the dais when it comes time for site plan approval for this facility, that they make their commitments. And I know my colleagues are working very hard to put very tough ordinances in place and we're discussing it now to ensure that our fire department isn't shouldering the load for someone else's failure to provide an ethical business practice. So, I whipped you for something you didn't come here for, but I want you to carry that message back to your client and I'm sure my colleagues would agree because we've had some conversations about it. I do want to see the site be developed. I will support the zoning change, but when it comes to site plan approval, we're going to be very critical upon that and it's my expectation, one of seven, that they're going to make some commitments here in front of this council for me, for them to gain my support. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. For town.
Thank you. Originally, Mr. Cohen, I was not going to support this pretty much because of what my colleagues had stated. What we are finding is a lot of facilities vouch and they say, "We're going to be a good business partner, you know, don't worry about it, our nurses have it covered." But again, protecting our residents and protecting those that serve our residents, they are stretched then. And what happens is, is there's a fall emergency and team members don't want to do it or they're too busy, so what they do is they arm our fire department with a call and they don't want to call a private ambulance company, they call us because they know we're going to come faster. So, as my colleagues had stated, I am going to be very tough, especially with my medical background, on the site plan and making sure that the plan that you put in front of us reflects of, you know, an honest and ethical business. So, I guess I will be supportive of this, but again, when the site plan comes forward, we do want to see the development, but we just have to be very careful because we see these type of skilled facilities, they need more attention than what originally comes to, you know, across our dais. And sometimes, you know, there's promises that are made and they don't always happen. So, I would actually, I'd hope that, you know, we would see your client here as well, but perhaps the next session we'll see them and we'll be able to ask questions, potentially see site plans. Really, what I'm seeing right now is just obviously a land division, but hopefully the next step, we'll be able to see a little bit, something more concrete, more of a business plan, just so we have a little bit more insight and we can kind of gauge what, you know, what you're going to be doing with the land, so. I don't know if he has a question.
My understanding, the next step will, I mean, you saw a conceptual site plan, but the next step, upon approval of the rezoning request, is coming back with a very detailed your ordinances or your requirements. It's not just like a preliminary review of the site plan, it'll be a pretty full-blown set of civil documents, looking at all the things related to the site, but no doubt that my client will be here and will be able to discuss. As a matter of fact, hopefully we'll have some discussions with you through this process to make sure the things you want are being implemented, if need to be implemented into the building in any way or things, or the ability to answer questions to reassure you that those things are in place. So, this is not just like a here and then, we'll see in a few months, we'll all be continual dialogue through the planning department and any of the members of council that we need to have conversations with.
Anybody else? Yes, Councilwoman.
Actually, I have two, and I apologize. Through the chair, what were the departmental requirements and recommendations that this was contingent on again?
Thanks for the question. That is a, that's, so there's, sometimes I present you with specific conditions and recommendations, but always you will see this as a catchphrase for anything that engineering, planning, DPS, police, fire may want to see in addition to whatever is approved when things pop up in the field during construction. That's primarily what it's there for. It's kind of to give the administration teeth to request things during the process. That's after the city council approves.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then to the, Mr. Cohen, through the chair, what is the timeline? So, because I do share the sentiments of many of my colleagues here talking about this, that, you know, should this get approved for rezoning, what is the timeline of your next step? And we know the process, but what are we looking at as far as, what should we be expecting?
It'll be several months before we're back. I mean, getting the land finished survey and the requirements, there's a month involved in that and then civil engineering could take one to two months to get everything put together that's required to meet your, you know, your list of requirements. So, it could be three months by the time we come back to you for those approvals. When that's done, assuming we get all the approvals, then the full set of construction documents for the actual building need to be completed. So, construction looking, starting at sometime in the beginning of 2025.
And just, again, just from my generation, I could understand, I know you answered my colleague's question as far as that these are, these residents would be senior residents, because I know some, I actually know someone in skilled nursing, but that's for catastrophic care. So, this is not catastrophic care, this is for senior residents that require more round-the-clock nursing. Is that what I'm understanding?
Correct. SNF, skilled nursing facility is what it goes under.
Very good.
Okay. Councilman?
So, I just have one thing to add, you know, as my colleague, Councilwoman, led off with, we have had petitioners come in time and again for skilled nursing facilities and also businesses who operate here in the city of Westland. I know that this is focusing on the zoning and I'm happy to support the zoning, but when the time comes, as my colleague led us off with, and as I think virtually everyone has stood up here and said, "We want to have a good business partner that will also work with our fire department," because we have seen them get abused when private EMS tells them, "Well, you know, it's going to be four, five, six-plus hours before we can show up, so, hot dog, why don't we call Westland?" And so, they do and we have an obligation to show up and respond immediately. And sometimes it is for smaller and simple incidences that because oftentimes these skilled facilities are understaffed, especially later in the day and throughout the evening and early morning hours where there's sometimes potentially only one person at some of these facilities, managing twenty, thirty, forty, fifty-plus patients at their facility, we want to make sure that we have, you know, a good business partner in this situation who is not just going to, you know, oh, let's just pick up the phone and call Westland for every little thing and abuse our fire department in our EMS response. So, I'd be happy to support the zoning change tonight, but just as my colleagues mentioned to take it back to your superiors, the notes that we have here today. All right. Any other questions from the council?
Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
To seeing you soon.
Okay. We will now move on to public comment. Everyone speaking before the council shall do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the orderly conduct of the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers or members of the public shall not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. The speaker can ask questions at this time and the person questioned may respond during the speaker's allotted time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. The clock will continue to run until the three minutes is up or the person is done speaking, whichever comes first. Is there anyone on my left? Yes, ma'am.
Raincoat and two umbrellas in the car.
Oh, no.
I'm eighty-nine years old and God has blessed me with reasonably good health. I don't anticipate having to go to an assisted living, but the cost factor is enormous. That's not why I'm here tonight. Good evening. I am Joan Pazant and I am the president of the Tall Oaks Condominium Association and I'm here this evening to alert our surrounding neighbors of some suspicious activity in our neighborhood. The first time, two young men arrive in a black, in a late-model pickup truck. They park in front of a house on the cul-de-sac, get out, appear to be taking pictures of the truck, move the truck in front of another house, get out, take pictures, and four times. They come late afternoon, early evening. They've been on the property now six times, each time doing the same thing, each time with a different late-model vehicle. The trucks were blue, white, black, and red. Then a cream-colored Chevrolet appeared, then a black SUV. The black SUV parked down on Black Oak. The resident come out and asked, "What are you doing?" They jumped in the vehicle and took off. Suspicious activity. After the first four events, I did report the activity to the police department. They said, "Do not confront and call the police." When the Chevrolet parked in front of my house, I did call, but the car left before I was, while I was talking with the officer. She said they would send a car out, but it's too late. We do not know what the intentions are. It could be innocent or it could be criminal. Are they taking pictures of the vehicle or are they taking pictures of the houses? We are on private property. This has made some of our senior citizens very uncomfortable because most of us that live in our community are seniors. I'm at a loss as to what to do next. If you have any help or suggestions, I would appreciate it very much and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. And if you could stay till after the meeting, we will have the chief come down and talk to you as well.
Okay, that'll be fine.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. Is there anyone on my right? Yes, sir.
I've been wondering, Westland, you know, they can cut these tree branches out of the middle of sidewalks that's sticking out by the center of City Parkway and Warren. You got to go near the end to the road almost to avoid them. And then, so, oh, can they film the potholes in Doward Tree Parking Lot? And then, what's going on with the Concrete Tango Skate Park? Is that still open? Is that closed or what's going on with that? Thank you.
Good. Thank you, sir. We took some notes on that. We can come and talk to you after the meeting about a couple of those things as well.
All right.
Is there anyone else on my left? Yes, there.
Hello, Derek Davis. I sit on the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Commission. I was really hoping that the mayor would be here tonight, but he's not, so I'm going to petition you to help me pass this information along to the mayor. Stephen Thomas has well been known to be causing problems on diversity, equity, and inclusion, and the Chair of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion has been unable to rein him in or keep him in for years. As you're all well aware, multiple members of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Commission over the past three years have either stopped coming in or resigned because of Mr. Thomas's behavior. Mr. Thomas had been asked to repeatedly not to bring up homophobic, transphobic, or other misinformation, lies, hate speech during his statements. I'm not here to ask him to change his views, I'm not asking to change your views, but what I'm asking you to do is to uphold the rules that you set, you and the mayor, set forth for city-run meetings, up to and including spouting how transphobic, hate speech, slander, lies, everything. I am not quite sure how his reappointment managed to get past everybody here on council. I am unaware. I have no faith in our newly reappointed Chair for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion as it has been well-known that Mr. Warren could not keep him in check before and he cannot keep him in check now. I'm asking you to please petition, ask, or just forward this information to the mayor and ask him to reevaluate his reappointment to Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. I know that you as a body can't remove him. I know, I do, but you do have influence and you do have input. And I'm asking you to stand behind one of your commissioners who wants nothing more than to see diversity, equity, and inclusion in this city. It works for everything. I know, as Mr. Warren is so often speaking about how diversity, equity, and inclusion in Westland was created in order to kind of dispel the rumors that Westland was a racist city. Do you want it to be known for being a homophobic one? Do you want it to be known for being a transphobic one? Diversity, equity, and inclusion encompasses all, not some. My last statement is to the newly appointed, reappointed Councilman Hornbuckle. Friend of mine reminded me that I don't like to give fodder to certain groups within this city that do nothing but cause anything, so I will not say what you said to me, but I will remind you that when someone asks you to give them space, do not assume that they don't want. When someone asks you to leave them alone, leave them alone. When someone says, "Just give me space," respect it.
Okay. Is there anyone else on my right wishing to speak? Public comment. Anyone else on my left? Yes, sir, Mr. Warren.
Yes, I was duly elected back as Chair of persons DEI. The real question here is that the power of the vote. There are seven members on that DEI board. The president doesn't make motions. It's up to the membership to make motions of what they want to do in regards to their fellow commissioners. In speaking with Mr. Derek, he said he would not vote to remove him. So, well, that's his choice, but as I said before, I'm not going to have this cross-conversation between him and Commissioner Thomas. It's up to the membership to decide what they want to do with their fellow commissioners and it's up to me to conduct the motion, to conduct the motions. So, therefore, he or anybody else can have all the lack of confidence in me, but I do run the commission in regards to federal law, state law, and the city of Westland and why the commission itself was created. And that's that.
Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? Public comment. Okay. Hearing and seeing none, we will go on to comments from the administration and Director Adams.
Thank you, Council President. I'm happy to give a brief update tonight on behalf of the mayor. Mayor Coleman recognizes May nineteenth through the twenty-fifth as Public Works Week. The services provided by the City of Westland Department of Public Service are an integral part of residents' everyday lives. The support of an understanding community is vital to the efficient operation of the department's programs such as storm drainage, streetlights, roads, walkways, and much more. So, we thank our DPS team. Also, National EMS Week is from May nineteenth to May twenty-fifth as well. The week gives emergency medical services and those who would like to credit them a chance to recognize their hard work. This Thursday on May twenty-third marks the opening of the Westland Farmers Market. Every Thursday through October tenth, the Farmers Market will be open from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM at Central City Park. And of course, our mission is to provide a link between the healthy food grown by local farmers and the residents who want access to food from local growers. Please note that cash, credit, and EBT will be the accepted forms of payment. And join us to honor and remember the brave men and women who have sacrificed their lives for our freedom at the Wayne Westland Memorial Day Parade and Remembrance Ceremony this Sunday, May twenty-sixth. The parade will commence at 1:00 PM, starting at John Glenn High School and is heading north towards Veterans Memorial Garden of Westland, which is at the library. The parade will be followed by a ceremony to pay respect to the fallen heroes who gave everything for our nation. Also, because of Memorial Day, the city offices will be closed that Monday, which includes City Hall, Library, and the Eighteenth District Court. There will be one-day delay in trash pickup as well. And offices will reopen for normal hours the following day, which is Tuesday, May twenty-eighth. On Saturday, June one, from eleven AM to three PM is Kids Safety Day at Westland City Hall. Snacks and fun for the kids and educational information for parents will be provided. For more information, please email m kelly at W L P D dot net or call seven-three-four-seven-nine-three-nine-three-seven-zero. And the mayor wants to extend his best wishes to Senior Resource Director Barbara Markham, who will be retiring at the end of the month. Barb has worked tirelessly for the seniors of our city and has left an incredible mark on Westland and Mayor Coleman said he is sad to see her leave, but is excited to support her in this next chapter of her life. Following that, Mayor Coleman has recently appointed Beth Welcomebach as the Senior Resource Director to replace Barb, and he wanted me to convey his confidence in Beth and that our senior residents will continue to thrive with her leadership and expertise. And as always, if you have any questions or concern, do not hesitate to reach out to the mayor's office by calling seven-three-four-seven-one-three-three-eight-eight-eight or emailing mayor at cityofwestland.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from the city attorney's office this evening?
Nothing from the city attorney's office.
Okay, thank you. We will now begin council comments this evening with Councilwoman Rukowski.
Surprise! Surprise! Yeah. Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. I don't really have too much to add. I would just like to, again, extend, you know, the honors to our public works members and as well as our fire department, who are EMTs. One thing that I think that we need to be conscious of is as we send out these declarations and resolutions of support and respect, and I just turned the lights off.
I haven't turned the lights off.
Just Evan.
Time to go.
Okay. We hear ya. You know, budget session, or the budget season is fast approaching, and, you know, we really need to be cognizant as while we're thanking people, on one hand, we want to make sure that we're not cutting them off at the knees on the other, especially as we have a proposal in front of us to reassign some of those workers in the Department of Works. So, it kind of disappoints me to hear that, you know, we'll set, we'll approve this resolution and quickly approaching is this new budget that's going to be effectually demoting individuals. So, we have to be sure that if we really and truly respect people, that we respect their livelihoods in total. And the same thing with our fire department. My comments earlier about the zoning is, you know, it's based on fact. Our fire department is called to many different senior living facilities, which they gladly go to. They want to render care to everyone. But these facilities are, you know, as Council President said, they're understaffed, poorly staffed. It's a for-profit business, and they're not, you know, if they're not supplying enough nurses or aides or however you would like to title these individuals, they're additionally not providing the people that do work there with the appropriate equipment to take care of these individuals. So, you know, on either side of that coin, we want to make sure that any resident, be them a homeowner, an apartment dweller, someone in a condo, or somebody visiting in the interim, are well taken care of and are treated with kindness and compassion. And I know our fire department does a great job of that, but it shouldn't have to be the taxpayer's burden to offset a for-profit business's shortcomings. And, you know, I'm sorry, you're not gonna change my mind on that. I'm very disappointed to hear that there's so much hullabaloo going on with the DEI. You know, I think it's important when we join and ask to be part of commissions, and especially one that it's very, it's not very new, it's one, four years now, or three or four years old, that we follow the spirit of what these commissions are about. And so, the spirit of diversity, equity, and inclusion is about embracing our diversity, providing equitable opportunities, and inclusiveness. A dear friend of mine once taught me to use the phrase, "I don't care." It doesn't make a difference to me, the color of your skin, not because I don't love you. It's just, I'm not gonna judge you for that. It doesn't, I don't care who you choose to love. It doesn't impact my life like that. It's your life, and if I love you, I will love the person you love. So, while we can all have different opinions, and we're God-given or by a document our founding father signed, we have to be cognizant of what our mission is when we join these organizations. So, if you're joining a board that's talking about creating diversity, equity, and inclusion, but you're, you have a very staunch view of how you want the world to be, perhaps you're not sitting in the right place, because it doesn't seem as though you want to work towards the mission of that body. And so, I would really, I've had a lot of disappointment in seeing these vibrant people who want to be a part of our community, want to be giving to our community, have to resign their positions because they're disenchanted by the goings-on. And, you know, so be it, if you're on the beautification board, the civil service commission, or the DEI, we have to dial it back, look at what our mission is, conduct ourselves civilly, and understand that, you know, you can have your opinion, but perhaps this isn't the place to share it all the time. Or if you're really just not gonna change your mind, I don't know how you want to get to a place where our community is embracing that. So, that's disappointing, and it's been disappointing to see chairman after chair, or not chairman, excuse me, member after member have to leave. It's, you know, it begs the question of, you know, how do, how do we actually have diversity, equity, and inclusion if we can't even keep a board sat? So, that, it's just very disappointing for me. With that, I want to thank the fire department for their continued love of our community, and the ball was a fantastic evening. It's great to see these young people, very, you know, it's nice to see them all interested in pursuing, hopefully, a career in fire service. And it's a beautiful tribute to Sergeant Stanaway and firefighter Wilkie, and, you know, may their legacies be eternal through the gift of that fire department. So, with that, ladies and gentlemen, I will say good evening, and I look forward to see you in a few weeks.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We will now hear from Councilman Wishart.
Good afternoon, everyone. I do share the same concerns about the DEI board. That shouldn't be allowed and shouldn't be welcomed in our city, and it looks badly on us. So, I hope to see something done with that in the immediate future. I have the same concerns as everyone else does when it comes to the new nursing home. It definitely needs to be addressed sooner rather than later. This issue will just continue to escalate as time goes on. So, hopefully, that will be addressed very soon with new ordinances. And a better news, Relay for Life, I hope to see everyone there June 8th. I know I will be there. And suddenly, worse news, Memorial Day, I will be there. I served many years in the active service in the U.S. Navy. I will be there. I've been to everyone since I was a teenager. I really hope to see everyone there. And Fireman Ball, phenomenal. Had a great time. Good food. Sadly, didn't win any prizes, but maybe my luck will change next year. Thank you. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. We will now hear from Councilwoman Baumann.
Thank you. I actually want to start with saying congratulations. Thank you, well, thank you for everyone for came up and talked tonight. I actually, it's one of the things that, as, before I was on council, it was one of the things I thought was so important was being able to have, having that time to speak as a resident, whether it was on the agenda or after, just being able to be able to say things, and hopefully get the issues addressed, or just have people be aware of some of the things that are going on in the community. Obviously, some, and so I think, I appreciate when people come and speak and come to the council meeting, because I think that's such a valuable part of the public open forum. So, I do want to say congratulations to recipients of the scholarships from the firefighters, and it was a great ball, and I'm glad, it's, that's a neat thing that we do this every year. And I hope, yes, I do hope that they will choose to have a career in fire service. One of the things, so this past weekend, a number of us on council actually went to the Michigan Municipal League's Summit, they call theirs, is their Spring Summit. And I know that Council President and I were in the training that spoke on DEI, actually. And they had, so for a day and a half, we actually had several presentations from a number of different people who had had different experiences and different expertise in DEI, as well as different, a couple of different cities who had shared things that they did. We had been asked, we also actually were asked to share what Westland has done, so we had met with Pascal, to, you know, with him and things like that, to kind of talk about the things that were going on with as our diversity officer. One of the things, and I can tell you, I took lots of notes from the summit, which was, you know, lots of, lots of things. I do that, there's a couple, a couple of books that I actually wrote down to read that I'm gonna read, because I do love to read. One of the things I'm just gonna bring out, that as we move into a community that is a welcoming community for all, because that seems to be, that's the general premise of DEI, is that it's a welcoming committee. People feel like they belong here, that's their home, and all of that. One of the things that was seen to be a thread that I took, as I listened to all, everybody talking, was having very clear definitions of each of the words. What does diversity mean? What does equity mean? What does inclusion mean? And it may sound simple, and it may sound, well, doesn't everybody know that? But I'll tell you what, listening to them talking, not everyone does. And if you don't agree, there's something called expectations and agreements that I like to talk about a lot of times. If you don't agree on what the definition is and what you're trying to get to with that role, then you can't have expectations, good expectations, of who is working towards that. And if you're working towards two different things because you don't agree on the definition, well, you're gonna always have communication and impasses. So, that was a thread that I took from each of the presentations, was really coming down and having that, whether it be a brainstorming session or whatever, and they did, they talked about this. It wasn't something that just happened like that. They didn't just, someone decided on, this is the definition we're all gonna agree on. That's not how it's done. So, when they came to their agreements, and they all, they all started their presentations with, "This is what our definition of diversity is, and equity is, and inclusion for their community and what they're working on." I think that's a really powerful place to start. So, I don't know if that's something, I'm just gonna throw that out. That's where, that was something that I took from that, so I'm just gonna share that. But I, because I appreciate that, because communication is important to me, and people being able to figure out where, where they can, you know, how they can communicate and how they can work together. So, I'm hoping that we can actually come to that, that point of working together somehow, some way. So, I hope, I haven't overstated anything, but thank you very much.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Good evening. Thank you. I guess I wanna, I have some other things, but I think this is very important. Mr. Davis, I want to first apologize for what you had to go through today. You should not have to go through that. No one should have to deal with, with that. But I applaud you for the way you handled yourself. You were definitely very professional, and to this, no matter what, how you feel, how angry you are with me today, I deserve it, but I will stand with you and fight with you to make sure that the right thing is the right thing at the right time. And like I said, I apologize. I just wanted to make sure a fellow resident was okay, and let you know that I already teed up the council to make sure that this do not be tolerated in none of our commissions and not in these halls. So, thank you, and like I said, I will stand with you no matter what. Thank you.
Portem.
Jeff, could you speak?
Oh, sorry, I'm so sorry. Councilman Hart, I heard you.
I was, Jeff?
Yeah, you sit there and be quiet, and they forget about you. How about that? So, I won't be too long-winded today. First of all, the DEI, kind of what I'm hearing, is very, very disappointing. And it's, I hate to use the word ironic, but horribly ironic that the DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion, has stories of actually the antithesis of what DEI is happening on one of the members there. It goes against the spirit, the charter, the purpose, the stated intent, and the will of the council to be able to have diversity, equity, and inclusion. So, Council President, I would expect that you would contact the mayor and voice our extreme displeasure based off of what we hear. And we would like, actually, and I request on record, that we actually have an explanation from the mayor to the council based off of what you talked, when you talked to him, we'd like to hear back from the mayor, because I want to get some resolution on this. Very disappointing. So, thank you, Council President. Beyond that, I would ask you all to remember it is Memorial Day coming up, and I say this every year, as a veteran, we always appreciate it when someone says happy, you know, happy Memorial Day to us. We know your heart's in the right place, but understand a Memorial Day is actually a day of sadness for us. It is a day of remembrance. So, we, I ask you to have a thoughtful Memorial Day, okay? Have a thoughtful Memorial Day in between the time that you spend with your family, which you should, and the time that you spend with your loved ones, which you should. You take a moment, not only for yourself, but you gather your family around you and remind them what Memorial Day is about, and the men and women that aren't here, and that's what Memorial Day is for. So, I'd ask you to have a thoughtful Memorial Day. My family this year will be reinstituting an old custom that we've kind of missed over the past few years, and I will be at Great Lake Cemetery to pay respects to my fallen brothers and sisters, as well as a couple of my ancestors that are there. So, I wish you all a thoughtful Memorial Day, and please keep that in mind. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Now, Portem.
Thank you. Well, thank you, everyone, for sticking around. This wasn't a super-long meeting, but definitely, we appreciate everyone showing up today, especially since it looks like the weather is getting a little bit nasty. So, I wanted to just replug Miriam's Relay for Life event as well. This event, definitely, because I have numerous relatives that I had lost to cancer, hits home with our family, but just looking at this again, it looks like they're gonna have a theme of carnival for a cure. So, on June 8th, wanted to plug that. Miriam spoke very quickly, but relayforlife.org/westlandwaynemi. So, that's information if you want to probably gather more of the schedule and everything that's going on. But I wanted to thank her for that presentation. I also wanted to thank Mr. Sergeant Polite for the firefighter scholarship presentation. I told him it was very nice. We don't always get included in presenting awards. It was, it was very nice that we were all able to, to just congratulate those recipients of the award. So, Arianna, Addison, Kaylee, I know he spoke a little bit quickly, they received a $1,000 scholarship. Aiden and Tia received a full paramedic tuition, $9,295. So, that is fantastic. And again, that was made part, a lot of the funds come from the charity ball in addition to everything that is done throughout the year. But just wanted to thank all the sponsors, everyone, my colleagues that attended. It was a fantastic event, and that ball raises a lot of money, but also memorial, too, for two of our bravest. So, I'm looking forward to next year. It looks like the date, May 3rd, is Orion Stone. So, if you are watching at home, I spoke with Sergeant Polite, and he said they're always looking for donations. So, you think about it now, maybe you have your own business, or maybe you just are friends with the business owner, but they're always looking for gifts and raffle prizes. So, I'll plug this throughout the year, because I know you guys do a great job. I'm looking down at Chief, but you do a great job of making sure everyone has something. So, I really appreciate that. I wanted to touch on a few things. I know the council touched on this, but the DEI, it's interesting that there was a situation that happened today after a fabulous leadership summit that happened last week. So, I think the council, thank you, Mr. Davis, for bringing this up. The council definitely heard your concerns. I don't think we take anything lightly that's brought to our attention. So, Council President, I think he's taken notes. The mayor's not here today. He's out of town for a conference, but we'll make sure that he gets the message as well, too. You know, it's really important that, as mentioned, that we are inclusive, and, you know, we try, and I think everyone knows my passion with those with disabilities, but we just try to be inclusive as a city, you know? And I think DEI is trying to ramp up to do a lot of great things. I was gonna actually plug this, that the wheelchair tune-up day is, is happening on June 13th from 2:00 to 7:00. Looking forward to that, and I'm gonna be sharing that out as well. It's a free event. But then, you know, you have a commission doing all this great things, but then the commission is not being embracive in itself. So, I am really disappointed to hear about that. I think we're gonna definitely have an offline conversation. So, thank you again for bringing that up, and I'm sorry that that happened. I wanted to expand a little bit more about the kids' safety. Every year, the Westland Police Department does such a good job. So, on June 1st, we're gonna be have safety, safety activities here, again, a free event. So, they've expanded their lists. So, they're doing gun safety, they're gonna do health topics, they're gonna do fingerprints, bounce house, DJs, a lot of giveaways. So, this event, I think, keeps on growing and growing every year. But I think it's really important that if you do have a young child, or maybe a grandchild in my case, you can bring them up for car seat, safety inspections. you can bring them up for car seat, safety inspections, or you can just hang out for the day. So that's happening on the 1st, from 11:00 to 3:00. Also wanted to congratulate Barb for her years of service. She's got very large shoes to fill, so she's been around for quite some time, and Barb does a fantastic job there, and I know she'll be sorely missed over at the Friendship Center. But Beth Welkembach, I know there's been a message, had, had been, I think, a press release and on our social media, so she's going to be taking the new director role. She actually works at the senior center now, so she's going, she's, I think she's going to have a nice transition, so congratulations to her as well. We are going to be having another study session, so I wanted to plug this, on Wednesday. So Wednesday, the 22nd, at 8:00 p.m. I know you're thinking, why is it so late? We had some conflicting schedules, the mayor's been out traveling a lot, and council had some things going on, so 8 o'clock was the best time that we could land on. But, again, this is very important, because there's a lot of questions that have not been answered with the budget, so we, I think we need to kind of iron out a few things. Council has some questions for administration that we've not gotten back, we need to expand upon a few things as well. So it's very important, you know, speaking with my colleagues, that we have one more go and make some changes. So that is this Wednesday, May 22nd, at 8:00 p.m. here at City Hall, so feel free to, to join us, if you will. One last thing, I wanted to thank our DPS and our EMS. You guys are sharing the same week, but wanted to thank you both for your hard work in the community, so I know it's been talked about, but wanted to put that plug in as well. And thank you, Councilman Hart, too, for bringing that up about Memorial Day. Wasn't going to say the same thing, but definitely, those that are celebrating, let's have a remembrance. So hopefully, we'll see you Wednesday, if not, we'll see you on June 3rd. If you need to reach me, you can find me on my personal council page, Councilwoman Melissa Sampe, or call me, 734-637-2078. Be safe and kind to each other, and we will see you soon.
Thank you, Pro Tem. A couple of things before I get to the, what I really want to talk about here. So congratulations to all the scholarship awardees for the fire department's scholarship award. This is a great program that they, our Westland Professional Firefighters do each and every year, so I want to congratulate all the awardees and thank the fire department and the union for the work that they put into giving some great kids a great scholarship and great opportunity. I want to wish a happy retirement to our senior services director, Barbara Markham, and thank her for all that she's done throughout the years here in the city of Westland. She has worked tirelessly for our senior community here in Westland, and I want to thank her for her service to seniors in our city and really to the community as a whole. She's been an invaluable asset, and she's not going away entirely. I know she'll be up there kind of volunteering and helping out when she can, and certainly mentoring and working with new director Beth Welkembach, who has already been volunteering her time up at the Friendship Center. So congratulations to Barbara on your retirement, and welcome aboard. Director Welkembach is our new senior services director. Couple of other things here, I want to congratulate all the officers who are recipients of awards at this past week's Police Department Award Ceremony. Congratulations to all the officers who are recipients of those awards. We have a great department that works really hard, chief, so congratulations to all of them. As my colleagues mentioned, it is Public Works Week, Public Works Week, and also Week Honoring EMS and Paramedics, so congratulation, or, well, congratulations to the council and everybody for, you know, finally getting the recognition that our DPS employees deserve and getting that through. Lord knows, we put a lot of work on them for very little recognition, but when your streets get plowed in the winter, when your sidewalks get repaired, when there's a water main break at midnight or 1:00 in the morning, they're the folks out there getting it done. So I'm glad that we were all able to come through and work with the administration to recognize our public works employees, and of course, recognize our EMS and paramedics here as well. I did have the chance to go, as my colleague mentioned, to the Michigan Municipal League Conference in training this weekend. I was there with Councilman Wishart and Councilwoman Baumann, so it was great to be there. I'm gearing up for my Level 2 certification, hopefully here sooner rather than later. I've gone through several of these MML trainings, and I believe it is our responsibility as council people to continue to grow and learn so that we can be the best representatives possible for all of you. You know, I got some things about the budget I'll say, but I'm going to save those for the study session. I do appreciate some of the answers that the administration has already gotten us. Nice to get an org chart this year after we spent all of last year asking for it and didn't get it, so it's great to get it this year, but we still have some things that we would like to get a hold of. Last but not least, folks, it is 2024 in here, right? Not 1984, 1994, 2004, it is 2024. We live in a country that had the old Burgerfeld ruling that legalized same-sex marriage, and we should certainly be tolerant of all individuals here in the city of Westland. And the point of having a diversity, equity, and inclusion board is to make sure that everybody feels welcome here in the city of Westland. It is to fight back against all forms of bigotry and discrimination, racism, misogyny, sexism, xenophobia, and yes, also homophobia, transphobia, and any discrimination against LGBTQIA individuals. If this were the first time we'd been hearing some of these things about one individual on the DEI board, well, maybe I'd be a little bit surprised, but it's not. We've heard this over and over again regarding one individual, and normally, it is not a councilperson's prerogative to comment or throw somebody who sits on a board or commission under the bus. I take this very seriously, and when, this is probably the third or fourth time from multiple individuals who sit on the DEI board, where I've heard that one of our commissioners is making blatantly homophobic and transphobic and anti-LGBTQ remarks, that is unacceptable. And you don't get to hold up a Bible, or a Quran, or a Torah, or any religious book to justify homophobia, or transphobia, or bigotry against LGBTQIA individuals. And if you can't accept that, then you're on the wrong board or commission. There are lots of other boards and commissions with which you can serve your community, but the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Board means inclusion for all of us, acceptance for all of us. It means that we should all feel welcome to call Westland a home and grow. We know that this community has had many problems over the years dealing with racism and bigotry. We know that there is a whole subsection of this community in the southeast end that was forced to live there when this was naked township, because they were not welcome to live in all avenues and all neighborhoods in Westland. But you know what? In the same vein that that's a problem, so is homophobia, so is transphobia, that is bigotry as well, and it is unacceptable. And I will be talking with the mayor about what happened at today's meeting. I did not get to stay for the whole meeting, because I had to come in here to get ready for the meeting, I was only at part of the meeting, but one of my colleagues did fill me in, thank you, Councilman, on what happened at the rest of the meeting. But again, if this was the first time that I had heard those comments, maybe I'd be a little bit surprised, but it's not. But am I disappointed? You bet I am. You bet I am. And am I upset? Yes, I am. So I will be relaying the words of this council, and also just my own personal sentiments with the mayor, because it is 2024 in here, and everybody should feel comfortable in their skin, everybody should feel comfortable with who they are, and everybody should feel comfortable, welcome, and accepted here in the city of Westland. If we're going to call ourselves the All-American City, well, we're all Americans in this room. Black, white, brown, gay, straight, trans, Catholic, Baptist, Lutheran, Jewish, Muslim, it doesn't matter. If this is the All-American City, then we better start acting like it. Is there a motion to adjourn?